We'll call our general plan update meeting to order at six oh four and. As more Sanchez, could you listen? Oh, never mind. Sorry. That's Shannon's role.
All right. I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And can we have roll call?
All right. I'll start with the planning commission this evening. Commissioner Kim.
Here.
Commissioner Contreras. Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Vice Chair Sarkia.
Here.
And Chair Reese.
Here.
All right. Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember me.
Here.
Vice Mayor Lewis.
Thank you, sir.
Council. Yeah, that's what's missing. Councilmember Sanchez.
There.
And Mayor Silva.
Here.
And then it looks like we'll move into introduction or introduce general plan update team. Andrea, you're you're running the show. Yeah.
All right. So on Zoom this evening, we've got a couple of our consultants, members of our consultant team. So we've got Gene War, who is the vice president and director of community planning services with Civic Solutions. Also, Adam Pizarkowitz, senior planner with Civic Solutions. And as well as Aaron Bannon Steele, a principal with Atlas Planning Solutions. So we'll hear a little bit from Gene and then Adam will go through our resource conservation presentation and then Aaron will cover noise and safety this evening.
Sounds good.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Silva, members of the city council and planning commission. Thank you for making the time tonight to have our second general plan update study session. So we can get your feedback and input as we keep moving forward in our process. I do have an agenda slide, but Andrea just told you how the evening is going to go. So I think I'll just move right into it. First, I just want to give you a brief overview about the general plan. You've seen these slides before, so I'm going to keep it really short. But I just want to make sure as we move into the media presentation that everybody's up to speed and on the same page. And if we have any new members of the public joining us, they're up to speed on what a general plan is as well. So again, we're going to start with the basics. A general plan is a long range planning document that's required for all cities and counties in California by state law. They guide land use, planning decisions and infrastructure investments and establish the city's goals and priorities for the next ten to twenty years. So you could think of a general plan as a roadmap or a blueprint for future growth and development in the city. Ultimately, the general plan can and should be used as a communication tool for city staff, you decision makers and the public to memorialize and convey the community's long term vision and priorities for the city. It's really an opportunity to get ahead of development applications and articulate the desired physical outcomes of the city. So you could think of it as a way to direct how the city will grow and develop in the future. Here updating the general plan now because it's very outdated with some elements nearly twenty years old. And during the past two decades, there's been quite a few new state requirements that have come along that we need to address. And of course, new issues and opportunities facing the community as well. As you know, city staff started on an update to the land use and circulation elements only back in 2021. This process was called the loose update. But as that process continued, staff realized that a comprehensive update was needed to address all the current issues and changes in state law that we're facing. So this update is building on the work of the loose and then also meeting with the current SR two forty six traffic calming program, which we discussed with you in detail in our previous study session. And this slide also I shared with you last time, and this illustrates the required elements required by the state or topics that we the general plan needs to cover. And I tend to look at the general plan elements as falling into two different categories or buckets. There's those that focus on the physical environment. So that's land use, circulation, open space and housing. And in our last study session, we talked about land use, circulation and connectivity, community character and trails and open space connections. And the housing element, as you know, runs on a different cycle, and that's already been completed and certified by the state for the 2023 to 2031 planning period. And then the second bucket is of required topics are tend to be more programmatic and focused on environmental performance. So these include safety, noise and resource conservation. And these are the topics we're going to be focusing on tonight. So unless anybody has any general questions, general questions about the general plan, I'll turn it over Adam, so we can get started into kind of the meat of the presentation tonight.
Yeah, I think we're all set.
Okay. Over to Adam.
Okay. Thank you, Jean. Good evening, everybody. As Jean said, this portion is going to focus on resource conservation and this aspect of the general plan. There we go. So kind of building off what Jean talked about, you know, California state law requires this part of the general plan to focus on conservation, development and utilization of natural resources within the city. They give a long list of potential types of natural resources, so air, water, forests, rivers, everything in between. But overall, as Jean mentioned, there's been a number of state laws that have come through that add on additional requirements for this this portion of the general plan. And one of those is the Right to Rome Act, and this was recently adopted by the state. And just very quickly, this requires that you identify and analyze existing or planned wildlife passage features to ensure that planned development does not undermine their effectiveness or utilization by wildlife through and in the city. So just an example of one of those more recent state laws. But other things to keep in mind with this would be the state laws surrounding the California Register of Historic Resources and the laws surrounding tribal cultural resources as well. So just kind of a broader outlook of what we're looking here for here. And as Jean mentioned, your existing general plan. So you have your conservation and open space element that was last revised in 2005. And the bullets here kind of just cover the topics within there. So again, you're hitting all the natural resources. Water resources and water quality, air quality, habitat and wildlife, cultural historic resources, visual resources and energy and mineral resources. So when looking at this new portion that we're going to create, these are kind of the general topics that we want to focus on here and especially tonight. So air quality, water quality, habitat and wildlife and historic resources. And I'll just briefly go through each one of these just to kind of dive into them a little bit. So with air quality within this section, what we're going to do is just analyze your existing conditions. What's your air quality like today? How is your air being monitored right now? What are potential sources of pollution to be thinking about that you already have, maybe some in the future that you want to think about? And then at the end of this, we want to kind of develop some goals, policies and programs. So what policies do we want to create to keep improving our air quality into the future? And how do we implement those policies through specific programs? And with water quality, very similar thing. So we're looking at existing conditions here. We're looking at your existing waterways, your regional watershed, where your drinking water is coming from, all your sources for drinking water, your groundwater supply, where your water quality is at right now, how you want to kind of structure it for the future and what types of goals, policies and programs we can create to make sure that you have water quality, very high water quality into the next few decades. And with habitat and wildlife, we're looking at, again, wildlife and wildlife movement overall, given that we have to now utilize the Right to Rome Act within this. But then we're also looking at, you know, the actual earth itself and soils and minerals and potential natural resources you have there. And then overall habitat protection and restoration, and that includes flora and fauna. So, you know, from the fish in the river to any sorts of, you know, native plantings that you might have along the riverbanks. And again, we're looking at policies and programs to help maintain, you know, the wildlife within within the city and anything to protect and restore existing habitats. So with historic resources, obviously, you know, we have a sort of a different focus from just natural resources, but we're looking at your existing resources in terms of historic landmarks, any tribal resources you might have. And how do we preserve and then mitigate any sort of loss of historic resources in the future? And I know you have resolution twenty dash twenty two for historic resource protection that you adopted more recently, which kind of lays a foundation for historic resource protection in the city, which is very helpful. But that kind of helps get us into what what sort of additional policies and programs do we want to develop to protect historic resources and mitigate the loss of any existing ones?
Can I ask an interrupting question?
Sure.
That is a reefer staff. Do we know what that resolution says? I don't remember that one.
That resolution, I believe, was the resolution that that identified a number of properties. I believe there were four properties within the city as historic landmarks pursuant to our city's municipal code section pertaining to historic landmarks.
Yeah. So then just generally looking at the topics here again. So what are the priorities that we want to have for these these areas on air quality and monitoring? Water resources and water quality, wildlife and habitat and your historic resources and or landmarks. So now just a bit of a discussion between everybody here in terms of looking at what our priorities are for protecting and improving air quality in the city. So just to kind of get us started here, wildlife wildfire smoke is really the greatest threat to air quality right now. So how do we want to kind of look towards that? I know the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District is the one kind of maintaining your air quality monitoring, and they have construction activities requirements around that. And then looking at the Santa Inez River, Zaca Creek, Thumbelina Creek. How do we want to look towards that in ensuring they have high water quality and as well as your other groundwater resources there? So is there is there anything that you guys have in mind as to topics or elements within these general topics that would give us some direction in terms of what we should focus on within these sections of the general plan? And that would help us develop some goals, policies or programs around these areas?
But with always air on the side of the planning commission starting because we'll get really long winded on our end. So why don't we always just have we'll go planning commission to to city council for that if that works for you guys. Yeah.
Yeah. So.
Okay. So if we're starting with the planning commission, do we just go ahead?
Oh, I.
Start us off. Yeah.
I was just wondering, you're talking about Zaca Creek and whatnot. Are we ever planning on moving any waterways through the town? You know, like San Luis Obispo, they have waterways going through the town.
Oh, you mean encouraging development along, say, Zaca Creek? Or yeah, that's something that we are absolutely looking at as part of our general plan update and in our land use element, but also it crosses over into this element as well. So.
Anyone else have any clarifying questions or discussion items at this stage? Well, I have a one thought that I'd like to add. You know, specifically, we at the prior meeting that we joint meeting that we had, we talked a lot about. You know, the scenic and biological resources that we do have within the city and desires for like pedestrian connectivity and also trails and it just what what can we provide for our citizens in that regard? And so something that I'd like to explore that ties into water quality is maybe some standards for what trails should look like along waterways, if there is potential for them in certain areas of the city. It'd be helpful to see a graphic of the creeks that in the waterways that were mentioned by Adam and talk about what that potential would even look like and where we could have, you know, buffers that included some sort of recreational benefit.
Yeah, and I think the timing on your comment is actually really great because we are going to be starting to look at actual designs for with cooperation with SB CAD, looking at some design options for the the river. So we're going to try to sort of involve that as part of the general plan update process as well, a joint effort in that regard. So.
Awesome. Yeah, I love to hear that. Thank you for the helpful graphics. You guys were prepared on your slide deck. Cool.
That's really helpful. Thank you.
Okay, great. That's all I have at the moment. Though I am curious, Adam, Jean, and I think it was Aaron. You know, as far as wildfire smoke, I imagine there's a lot of communities in California that are experiencing the same issue. So how have you seen it approached in other places?
I think Aaron, I'll pump this to you as well, but I think looking at, you know, what your exposure has been in the past few decades or so, I guess, especially since the last general plan update. And certain mitigation efforts, like filtration systems within buildings, things like that. So just kind of looking at what your level of exposure is right now, looking at the future. Granted, the wildfire maps were just updated and that kind of feeds into the safety element where that will be present. But this is where kind of the two elements will kind of cross over and inform one another. So things on wildfire and the safety element will inform how we approach conservation as well. Aaron, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Yeah, well, wildfire smoke is definitely a big concern for a number of communities. Yeah, I think one of the things we have to understand is what is the percentage of homes and and structures that have filtration available, you know, having a air conditioning unit of some sort can help. But if you have natural ventilation or that's what you rely on, you're going to be one of the more vulnerable populations with regard to wildfire smoke. So I think that's where we need to get a little smarter and need to understand. From there, it's it's about what types of policies do we put in place, not only to promote retrofit, but then also for new development that may be coming in or redevelopment that's coming through the city. And so, you know, I think you we want to recognize that wildfire should be accounted for through the development process. And to do that, we've got to make sure there's some policies that back that up that help city staff as well as decision makers.
Great. Thank you. And then I did want to just touch on water supply. And, you know, this is also a good item to have Rose and her team involved on. But, you know, I have heard the members of the public comment on water supply and, you know, some some times of the year, like there's potentially some coloration or issues that people perceive, at least in the water supply and I don't know any of the particulars of that, but it would be interesting, like when we're talking about strengthening our sources and supply of water. It would be helpful to have public works involved in discussions. That's I guess my only thought at this stage, but.
So here is in a lot of cases, the periodic discoloration of of water that's being experienced is due to the transition between our local water supply and state water supply. And as that happens, there's some churning of some of the the sediment and the and other things within the water lines as they switch. But with any luck, that shouldn't impact our potable water supply. We have testing ongoing to make sure that doesn't happen, but certainly we need to establish policies to ensure that continues.
Right, right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else on the planning mission have any? Any other thoughts to add?
Maybe just real quick. Do we have, are we for the tribal resources? Do we work with the Chumash Band with that with their resource monitors and things we have? Do we currently do that?
Yeah, as part of development projects, that is something that we typically consult with them on depending on the location and the details of the.
Their maps and things that they have.
Do we have? I mean, obviously, different kinds of tribal resources. Do we have any, I mean, known or mapped resources that were?
So that's not something that is publicly accessible. So that's that's we that's why we consult with the tribe and then they they're not publicly mapped essentially. We we consult with them to inform us on any any resources.
Right. I just wasn't sure, like the prevalence as far as maybe we don't know where they are, but do we know approximately like how prevalent?
We know that in certain areas of the city, the the tribe has been less concerned. And in other areas of the city, they will always request consultation. So a lot of it is, as Mrs. Kiefer indicated, is due to location specifics and project specifics, how much grading is involved, where it's located. But I think it's safe to say that with with the creeks running through and the river running through town, there are quite a few locations that are going to be subject to tribal consultation.
Great. Thank you.
Moving on to the council, I just to check, Adam, are we is it are you wanting is are we doing all resources or were you hoping just for water, just to make sure we're not jumping ahead of any kind of presentation pieces you wanted?
Oh, no, I have other questions on natural habitats and then historic resources as well. But I guess, you know, we can kind of cover everything too. If you guys just want to jump into certain topics, it really doesn't have to be too structured.
Okay, great. Then we'll move on and we'll just let's go straight to councilmember Hornick and then we'll go from there. But let's just get that started. Really? You built it up that entire time? Councilmember me, did you have anything? As more Sanchez?
Yeah, I just the concern about wildfire smoke is it's something that's going to happen and we're supposed to plan for there might be a fire and then we need to, are we going to start filtering the smoke into new buildings or? You know, it's like air conditioning. You have air conditioning if you're needed or you want it or you can't afford it, you don't get it. But it required somebody to have new smoke filters in their new buildings. Is that that new that coming in the future? Or is that something? Like I said, I think is I mean wildfires are they happen in? nobody knows when they're coming, they hit and they go and then the wind takes out the smoke and then everybody breathes again. So I just don't get the trying to make a kind, some kind of.
Yeah, I think what, what we're, what we're really looking for here is, is establishing policies by which the city could condition future development to install some sort of filtration system before it's built. Obviously homes that are built already. There probably is not going to be a requirement for that. We could, the city might want to set up, you know, some kind of fund to help people install that or just general policies we're looking at to try and mitigate that, that potential in the future. But, but I don't, I mean.
I've never heard of it before.
No, it's, it's fairly, it's fairly new.
But I, I just don't see spending money to make policy for something that or if somebody is concerned about that, when they build their house, they could put in some fire smoke filters if that's what they can afford in their quality of life, you know, but for us to tell somebody that you have to put in some new fire, smoke filter system is, I, I just don't see the concern or, I don't think we should have new rules because there might be a fire. That's just my opinion. And, and the water deal, we, we check the water. I mean, I used to do water. So the water quality is as good as it gets, but it's, it's tested. I think it's weekly now. You know, but then they stay on top of state requires a lot of.
Maybe I'm, this is going to, I'm going to be showing my ignorance with this question, but I'll ask it anyway. I just want to, I'm assuming that all of the schools have like some kind of like smoke policy and not letting the kids out when the air quality, I guess my question is like, how do we publicize air quality to the citizens here? And then how do we ensure that like, for example, like when I taught, once the air quality got past a certain point, the kids weren't allowed outside for recess and we did make sure that the air conditioning was on in the classrooms and things like that. So I guess my, I just want to, I do those policies already exist and I'm sorry if they do that I asked that question.
I think the schools, they obviously operate on their own policies. That's not something that we could probably mandate, but I'm sure they do have their own.
And the city doesn't monitor air quality on an ongoing basis. That's i- i- in, in Santa Barbara County, that's the purview of the Air Pollution Control District. And they monitor that on an ongoing basis and they will put out alerts when, when air quality is projected to, to be unsatisfactory.
But that's based out of Santa Barbara Airport.
That's, well, it's the, the agency is countywide. They have, I'm sure they have monitoring stations all over the town.
Hand out masks and the air quality. It was recently we had.
Yeah, we did. When, when they had the big fires up here, they were handing out distributing masks, but, but they, they will distribute, if there's alerts, they'll put that out to the schools.
And then how do we put that? And then like, but as a city, do then we put that out somehow?
I'm, I'm just thinking maybe there's a way to have it somewhere on our city webpage.
Yeah, it's just something simple. I mean, there's nothing like or on social media, whatever, like anywhere people look because that is, I mean, if someone who had asthma or has asthma, like it would be nice. It's just a way to inform the citizens so they can make thoughtful decisions about if they want to be outside or not.
I had another question. I just wanted to add the, the Buellton school system constantly maintains and keep updated air conditioning systems. All right. So we're in really good shape for. My other question was on the creeks and waterways. Are we involved at all and isn't that flood control and, and, and we don't have any? As, as far as I know, we don't have any kind of program inside a creek bed or anything. It's just natural flow and we stay.
We have general policies regarding development around the creek beds and such, but as far as activities within the creek bed, we don't have jurisdiction there. That jurisdiction is maintained at the state and federal level and then at the county level through the flood control division. That's correct. We can plan, we can plan a walkway through it, but we'd have to obtain, obtain permits through those various agencies to do that.
One question. We have some though on over by the river trailer area.
Uh, well, uh, we, we have, um, we own property outside the golf course there, but we, we have, um, we have, yeah, we have easements on, on private property through, through that area as well to the west. Most of that is outside of the river channel. And where, where we would get into the possibility of, of actually moving into an area that's part of that, that channel, we would need permits. And mostly the area we're looking at, we probably would not. But if, if we fall into that area, we would have to go through fish and wildlife, state fish and wildlife and Army Corps of Engineers.
Like outside of Top Bank or?
Yes.
Thank you.
I, I have a few just to follow up with. Um, I guess just kind of in going through the, the air quality and the water, starting with air quality, I would be, I guess, on the other end of, from Councilman Sanchez to mine, I was just saying like requiring things like, um, I know that there's the new, the new filters that you're, or the grills that you're supposed to put on that prevent embers from coming into it or things of that sort that have, we've been trying to retrofit would be something of interest. And I know that we've been talking about defensible space too, as a thing with the requirements for landscaping. That's kind of a best practice of that. Are those the types of things that are appropriate or at least able to be discussed in a general plan to normalize for policies? Is that what we're talking about just to help qualify what can be discussed?
Yes, absolutely.
Great. So we'll just keep going with that. So I would say that from my perspective, I would think that for future developments and encouraging of adoption, I agree that it's hard to predict when a wildfire could happen, but I also think that the more we acknowledge wildfires take place and the more we can kind of lead the way with ways to protect property and safety. I would be interested in defensible space conversations, filtration systems and, and ember protection that involves with it. I think that leads into some of the discussions we've circled around too, with tree and native plant conversations in the city as well for trees that are good for, I think that, I mean, everyone, I don't know, but there's something about like an oak that's really good that if you have those, they're like water fire prevent, fire prevented. But I think that we should really look into our landscaping requirements to integrate native plants and trees that are thoughtful with the fire protections available. From a water situation, something I've always thought about is like, you know, we, with runoff prevention with future development, I think we have bio swell requirements involved with that, but ensuring that that's up to date to try, provide the greatest amount of protection and filtration that can naturally occur. I think oftentimes when we talk about any construction, there's a runoff concern that comes up from it. And so that watershed being thoughtful for where that's being funneled and distributed. I was curious from the, our, our, our vendors, our specialists, I'm not sure how to, but, um, we have a new state legislation situation coming up. I know that there's laws that when we first started this conversation at the beginning of the year to now, there's a better understanding of what would be new state laws coming in 2026. In terms of our general plan from when we had it last to now, is there anything that has impact? I know there's the room to roam requirement, but is there anything else that you're forecasting that might be kind of important or something for us to be aware of that you're seeing as a new adoption coming into the 2026, we should be thoughtful for as we're talking through these general plan discussions? Or is that just the room to roam was the only one you were concerned with?
That's the main one we'd be concerned with as a, you know, a required piece to this, this portion of the element. But granted, there's, you know, with all the other elements as well, there's, there's always something that could. And it depends on, you know, when, when the legislation is passed and when it's officially enacted. But in terms of this, it's really the, the room to roam is, is the, the big one to incorporate into the resource conservation element.
Perfect. And the only other one I had is I know when we talk about like the wild wake, we don't really have the same issues as like LA with wildlife crossings and things like that. I don't believe there's any migratory animals that we are concerned with that we bisect through from a migratory situation, like, you know, how there's people like the mountain lions or the coyotes that you have to have. The swallows is a whole different discussion, but is there any kind of a migratory animals that we have to acknowledge that we bisect through the city with?
I'm, I'm not aware of such. Uh, we, we are, I think benefiting quite a bit from the fact that the size of our city being only one and a half square miles. With considerable open space all the way around the city that we're not having to worry too much about obstructing wildlife corridors through the city proper.
Yeah. And if I could just add, uh, CDFW, California Department of Fish and Wildlife has produced a GIS map of potential wildlife barriers throughout the state. And you guys don't have one within your jurisdiction. Um, so that's good news. But the, uh, they also designate, um, Santa Inez River as a steelhead trout, uh, stream. So in terms of wildlife moving through the city, I know only a portion of the stream is technically within the city limits, but that is something to be aware of and something that is certainly on CDFW's radar, um, constantly in terms of keeping that population, uh, up as much as possible. So just something to consider.
Been great to follow up for.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, when we're discussing the wildfire smoke or, or certain air quality policies that we're interested in implementing, I think the priority there should be any new particularly sensitive uses that we might see like centers or, you know, places where there may be seniors or a lot of children, right? If we were looking at those kinds of policies, I think they should be focused on certain groups and then maybe in consultation with the Buellton EOC or whatever field group you have for emergency response, like the spaces that we would use in the case of an emergency should be the focus of those policies. I generally agree that we, we don't have to have necessarily broad adoption for a single family home development, but places where people would be concentrated. Obviously these events are becoming more common.
For heat, that probably would be the same, we would use it for smoke.
Yep. That's my two cents.
And I was just going to add too, from the AP pollution control district, I know they have low cost sensors. And so I think if we can dig into it, the opportunity for partnership to bring those low cost sensors as we're looking to develop our general plan for future things of allowing at least the space that any future developments have the, we have, the city has the ability to foresee if there's an opportunity to put a low cost sensor to that to further provided options. They're usually looking for land opportunities to get those put into.
We, we've made the request for, to, to include a, an air quality sensor somewhere within the city here and we have a number of facilities within the city that are probably adequate that are city facilities, which we would volunteer for that. We're just waiting to hear back from AP CD as to when and where they want to place that.
Okay. Um, I think a lot of these questions are starting to veer towards actually things that Aaron might be touching on as well, um, evacuation and fires. So, and I would do want to make sure we have enough time. So unless anybody else has anything they want to address about resource conservation, I think we should get to Aaron's, which is going to have a lot of crossover in terms of the wildfire safety portion of the discussion.
Thank you for gentle parenting us back on the topic. We appreciate that.
Yes, sure. Adam, you want to close yours? So Aaron can share.
Okay. Everybody see that? Okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, uh, thank you very much. Uh, it's wonderful to meet you all and, uh, we'll go ahead and just get started. So we'll talk about noise and safety and I'm going to start with noise. Real quick agenda, some meeting outcomes. I'm going to go over what a noise element is and, and a little bit about yours. And then we'll do the same for the safety element. And then I believe, uh, the final piece after we go through Q and A is some next steps that Jean's going to share with the group. So part of what I wanted to share was a little bit better understanding of what a safety element does and what it is. Same with the noise element. And then I also want to make sure that you understand kind of how we take this forward and, and our next steps in making sure that you can, uh, remain involved in, in this process of building an updated version of your noise and safety element. So the noise element is, is a required element. There's, as Gina had mentioned, seven required elements. Uh, and, and really what you're looking for is trying to identify and understand any noise issues you have within your community. Looking at, you know, kind of your current as well as projected noise levels. This is typically from your major roadways, any air transport or high noise uses or developments for Buellton, you know, some of those may not apply. But again, these are very generalized requirements that the state has identified. We also will look at the contours associated with, uh, noise and how you can address that from a land use compatibility standpoint. Essentially, do you really want to put the preschool right next to the highway when you have 80 decibel traffic running, you know, north to south or east to west, you know? And so this is a way for you to have extra tools on what you can and can't, or what you should and shouldn't allow as far as land uses next to noisy locations. And ultimately it comes down to a set of policies and implementation measures to help you in better addressing some of these future concerns or some of these existing concerns. On the right is really just a graphic to try to illustrate what noise can look and feel like. You know, dur- in, in an average community. So you've got your neighbor who's decided to run that chainsaw or leaf blower. You're looking at noise that's between 106, 115 decibels. That's very loud and something that could actually damage your ears over a prolonged period of time. So you know, we, we try to use, uh, you know, this information to guide us as to what we should and shouldn't do for our communities. In the case of your noise element, on the right, you'll see the 2025 noise contours. This is mainly based off of roadway traffic. And so you can see Highway 101 is definitely the biggest noise generator for your community along with, uh, State Highway 246. And so if you look at the noise contours that are developed, you want to pay special attention to either what you're allowing from a land use perspective, or what you're requiring to make sure that you're attenuating that noise or you're mitigating the impacts associated with that noise. But based on the types of developments you're allowing. And again, we're, we're just highlighting some of the existing goals that you currently have. You know, this process is really about, do these goals work for you? And, you know, do we need to change anything to make sure that it's really appealing to what you'd like to achieve as a community projecting out over the next 25 years? So the main kind of discussion for today, I really wanted to understand from a noise element or noise perspective, what's causing noise in Buellton? You know, you know, the, the community, you're on the ground. So are there things that were here or here today that may have not been here, you know, 20 years ago when this element was written? What noises are new or different now? You know, your community has changed. Um, and you'll know and understand what those changes look like. How do you feel noises being dealt with now? And then how would you like to see it change if there is any need for change? And so those are really the kind of four key questions I wanted to open up to, uh, the planning commissioners and the, and the city council members and, and, uh, looking forward to the dialogue.
On the planning commission side, does anyone have any thoughts to share with Aaron?
Well, slowing down 246 as, as both come in to the Buellton area is really going to be a, a benefit to bringing the noise down. Getting it 35 miles an hour is, is a big difference. I live off 245 six and, and, and I can tell the difference and a lot of times we need to keep the windows open and let the air come through and, and we'll get all that noise. So slowing it down will help. The, the only benefit with the traffic I have there on two side of 246 is it helps the airflow when the cars and trucks come on by here and there. So that's like.
I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna piggyback on that as well as how's our traffic mitigation plans are and how we implement that, especially with, uh, speed zones such as 246 corridor, along with the flying flags corridor. And even on McCarthy Way, we're now, we having a lot of people living in those areas and with the new development coming. The other concern that I, uh, that I want to touch on is kind of, uh, what can we limit and what can we do as a planning commission in work regards to DBs for working hours for construction? Well, what time is that? When does that happen? What is the decibel rating for that? Uh, I'm not quite clear right now if we have that in place, especially for construction noise, especially when we're doing a lot of development. What those are, what those hours are, and if we adhere to those along with weekend work as well.
Yeah. And we do have those standards in our code and absolutely we can take a look at what those are and, and see if we might need to make some adjustments.
Great. Commissioner Campbell?
I just wanted to highlight the growing frequency of launches from Vanderburg. Air Force Base, Space Force Base. My house seems to rattle, um, at least a couple of times a week at this point. So it's not only just the actual sonic boom of them actually taking off, but actually your house actually.
Yes, I live, I think three miles from the launch pad. So I am very familiar.
Commissioner Campbell?
Now they touched on everything that I was going to bring up. So.
Great. Yeah. I would say that's probably the only Right. Yeah, I would say that's probably the only more frequent source of noise that I have noticed, what Commissioner Campbell shared. Besides that, I think that the generals sources of noise are the same as they have been. What's maybe changed is higher density projects being located closer to those noise sources. And so I would be curious to hear not necessarily now, it's not the appropriate time, but you know, from your expertise, if you've seen anything creative on to approach noise attenuation. And I I would also just add that, like, this document, to an extent, these things are already being addressed by the green code and building code and some of that is already occurring. So I'd not want this document to just regurgitate something that's current because actually we've seen how quickly the building code and the green code have changed to address these sorts of things. And I don't it would be silly to spend our time and energy on something that's going to be outdated in three to six years and is already being contemplated at the state level. So that that would be my addition, but I would be curious if you guys have seen something in a comp plan that has been you know, an innovative approach to noise attenuation when you do have those noise contours affecting a community.
My turn? Is it responding or not?
Yeah, that's okay. It doesn't have to be now.
Okay, great. Sounds good. We'll move over to the council and you you want to go? Okay, here we go.
I just want to piggyback on what Commissioner Reese was saying. In terms of some of the creative potential noise attenuations, I think it'd be cool if it was possible to somehow like tie this into our tree pending Tree City designation or our Thousand Trees Initiative. I'm not sure if we could use landscaping shrubbery trees to sort of help with some of the noise attenuation. And the other thing I wanted to point out, like, I know we have you know, we've been working with Cosmont and Caltrans to hopefully skinny the two forty six and see how that goes. Maybe down the line have some of that landscaping involved, but also some of the I I just think like careful planning is going to be necessary for for some of like what's coming on two forty six and our defined economic corridor of Avenue Flags in terms of businesses, like we have the daily car wash and I always feel bad for the people who live behind them because the noise that comes out of those jet dryers is is quite loud. And so I just like the general plan, be mindful of that and potential developments that happen along those economic corridors to you know, be mindful and hopefully reduce noise.
Yeah, I used to get mad at the car wash because it messed with my AM radio. The I was out the other night, I was on Facebook, there was somebody complaining about the noise and they said there was noise at the wastewater treatment plant. So I know I used to work there, so I went down there at midnight because if there was something wrong, I'd know if there was different and it wasn't different and it was same hum of the compressor. The the blowers and the splash of the water, that's all that's down there. So I just wanted to if you read that on Facebook that somebody was complaining about noise, that wasn't the noise. I think some of the noise sometimes comes from granite. They're doing something at night, but most of the noise comes from, you know, the semis coming through town, you know, just bombing through town. Some of them have their pipes open or whatever, but that's nothing we can do about. But I was just saying I was mindful of the noise the other night and it wasn't this normal noise, I think. That the other, the other noise problem we do have is acceleration west of town. Everybody, they go forty five as soon as they go sixty five. So we have all these new cars that have the new pitch and pipes that make more noise and everybody revs them up and you could sit in the afternoons, you know, the and I I know I ride my bike and when I take off there, I go a little, take the gears out a little further and make a little more noise. But that's some that we may get complaints about and I don't know if that's something we could I've had, I've seen towns where it says there's noise restriction and, you know, we'll be cited, there's a I think it's Corolline Idaho, but there's a big sign that says you, you know, you will be ticketed for your loud pipes. So it's just something to consider. I don't know. If we can do, we don't have any more problems with their drivers attend. Anyway, just comment.
Councilmember me?
So I have a hyper specific example, I guess, for my district, but obviously the tractor trucks on McMurray. I mean, they're very loud. People complain about them all the time in our neighborhood and then we're going to have the seniors living there. So it's just one of those things to obviously, we just need to find them a different place to go. But then my concern is where are they going to go? Because they're just loud. So just being thoughtful about like, how do we make that noise move to a different location, but then also be thoughtful about wherever that's moving to. And then I guess, I mean, the other big complaint I get about noise is roosters and dogs, you guys, but we always, we already have rules about that. Thought I'd throw it out there because those are literally all the complaints I get. And so, like, I know it sounds silly, but if we're generally talking about noise, I figured we really need to check that our city policies around animals and animal noise are thoughtful, especially because we do have a lot of high density housing coming in and also even people in like Thumbelina or regular neighborhoods, they probably don't want people's dogs barking at two o'clock in the morning, which that's normal dogs out during the day, it's fine. But like when I'm walking my dog at eleven o'clock at night and I hear a neighborhood dog barking for the thirty five minutes that I'm walking my dog, I'm like, that's probably not nice for the person that lives next door. So I know those are very hyper specific examples, but like big to small, I figured, so I went small. So there you go.
A few that I had was just, I think, being thoughtful from a landscaping perspective. I know that leads into the construction conversation, but I think when we allow landscaping services to take place, there's just something, especially when example was a leaf blower next to you. Sometimes I remember city services, like sanitation even, it was something I read, I think there's a big lobbying thing because my trash was getting picked up at like Fridays at seven AM and it was just like, no one wants that slot. So it was just but if that's the way the country, yeah, I know everyone's just he always gets if you you get started with that one, but I just think being thoughtful from some of those kinds of conversations, be building on council member meat also just commercial vehicle travel in residential is a big one. We see a lot going on. Kind of just concerns about what that looks like and what what our roads can handle and also just the noise that that integrates into it, especially as people try to use deviation. If the two forty six goes down, every semi truck goes through a neighborhood to try and figure out how to get around that. So just being thoughtful of how that impacts. And then the big one is just really when we look at our construction is setback. I think Juliet Walk is always going to be the example that if you have a front facing two forty six Juliet Walk property, you can't hear anything. And so as we're looking at like Avenue Flags for like doing housing on the two or on Avenue Flags, I just think maybe when we look at our setback consideration is having that be in there. And as we look to the urban growth boundary expansion, not recreating the same issue again of if housing is pushed up against the one oh one as close to that as possible, that would be of concern because it would likely be where you'd put the high density housing. It would be usually attached to that and you're kind of just perpetuating that. So it might be thoughtful to maybe start making some rules of how do we prioritize open space next to the highway to put housing with a bit more of a, you know, a barrier there to help them out with that.
Yeah, with with regard to that, Mr. Mayor, there are state requirements regarding where housing can be built pertaining to various noise contours. And if it's within certain noise contours, there are different construction methods that have to be used to mitigate the noise inside the building. If I can ask a question of our consultant real quick, if that's okay.
Yeah, please.
Aaron, can you tell me that noise contour map you showed us earlier? It it just references decibels on that. Is that is that a C N A L contours or are those D B A or L D N or what's the, what's the
I don't, I I'm I'm not exactly sure. I pulled this out of the general plan, so I don't want to miss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I I figured that was something you said it was the twenty twenty five, but it was the twenty twenty five general plan.
Yeah, yeah. So this is out of your general plan. This is, these are the projected noise contours for twenty twenty five based on your traffic jet information that was used.
Is C N A L still the standard when we're dealing with noise for construction mitigation and such?
I believe it is.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I believe it is. And and to that point too, I know, you know, there's been a lot of talking. It's been great. I've been listening to everything and taking a lot of notes. And you're absolutely right. There are codes that are going to be in place. There are codes that are going to be updated. And you can meet code stand, code requirements all the time. The difference where I think your general plan can play a much stronger role is that the codes don't take into consideration really good design. So if we actually put in policies that promote really good design, there's a way that you can design homes that are on, you know, very heavily traveled roadways, but they're not experiencing the kind of noise impacts that you would experience if the design was not taking that into consideration. A good example is I went into a house that was on one of the busiest roads in the town that I live in. And this is a six lane road. And when I was inside the house and and in the interior courtyard, I could barely hear the roadway and the and the noise coming off of that. So I think we have to recognize that if we're able to promote really good design in the new developments that you're approving and they're taking noise as one of those key considerations, they can probably really do a good job of helping to make sure noise gets attenuated and you're and you're providing the kind of standard and quality of life that you expect in Buellton.
Let's do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I know at one point we were undertaking an objective design standard effort for multifamily housing. Is that where am I thinking of the city of St. Ryan? I'm sorry if I am.
Well, that is something that is on the table as part of, you know, general plan update processes, you know, it could become a program if that's something that you are interested in, but we don't aren't currently undertaking.
I mean, to Aaron's point, it sounds like there is going to be some overlap. Those things that generate good design and noise management are going to have to be objective standards that we apply to multifamily housing projects. So that that would be my comment there.
My comment and my question, but comment would just be, it is refreshing and I appreciate that comment of like the idea that our general plan doesn't have to just be bare minimum code compliance. It is refreshing to know that there can be a bit more of an emphasis. And I think that that's something that anyone who has to speak to a resident in our city would say is it'd be nice not to do the baseline legally required minimum bronze package of what we try to do with things. And so I would just say be thoughtful to see how you could integrate some of these things that are maybe more responsive to what we're talking about and then going beyond what would just be required. I was curious, when you say, do you want to change how noise is dealt with? How do we deal with noise now? Because it feels like it's kind of a sorry that was loud situation and not really much beyond that?
Well, I think with with individual noise complaints, which is probably what you're thinking of when this question is asked, that that becomes more of a discussion of what's a public nuisance beyond what's not. And and we can certainly address policies toward that effect and bolster that with with municipal code updates, which would, you know, add some teeth to it. I'm I'm guessing, and please, Aaron, Gene, Adam, correct me if I'm on the on the wrong path here. We're starting to talk about what other policies and goals can be implemented by the city through its general plan process in order to ensure that noise is not such a problem, particularly with regard to these these known noise generators that we have, such as our highways running through town, such as the, for instance, the the design the design guidelines or whatever we want to call them that Aaron was referring to, or if you implement certain design approaches, you can mitigate the noise without having to to move into a higher level of construction standard.
And I guess it always comes back to me of just like, not to use a Disney reference every time and I need you to update, but like, what's, you guys work in this all the time. What's your EPCOT? What's your like, really like, what's your your design thing? We're like, oh, God, you know, it'd be nice if a city was like, boy, howdy, it'd be great if some city tried experimenting with this. Like, what would you guys say is something between both of these elements that you are not seeing adopted, but you would say should really be considered that we haven't talked about here?
Am I going to take this one, Jean?
Noise, yeah.
I mean, it's it's a, it it depends. Is probably the best answer, right? Because we can always go to another community and take something off the shelf that they've done, but there's no guarantee that that is going to work in Buellton, right? Like, we want to make sure that as we look at what are your your issues and we we then apply the right standards as well as the right approaches from a design perspective. I think, you know, if you look at in in the example that I was giving you, you know, this large roadway that had all of these residential homes on it, you know, they basically were migrating the front door element to the side of the house instead of at the front of the house. And they were using the front of the house as basically the the buffer and the space that that was in the front of the house was merely just a utility space. It was a garage you know, type of a space that gave you that buffer between the noise source and the living space. And so I think that you have to look at it from the standpoint of you've got developers or you have existing homes and the way that they've been designed. And and one of the things to talk about in planning is you know, we're basically fixing the problems of the past and we're creating the problems of the future. Right? And so if you go around Buellton and we look at all of the homes that you currently have, they're designed in a certain way and they're 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 focused in on a certain type of use or development. And what we have to do is start to look at, how do we change that and have that conversation at the staff level? And then with the community itself. And and oftentimes you'll find that some communities don't, they're they're really not interested in change. And so, you know, this is part of this process is we have to have the the conversations about how interested are you in change? And then what can it look like? And that's where I think the design can really play a key role because a lot of times people will have a a perception of what it what it may mean to have multifamily or have a certain type of development, but you can show them there's a number of ways to do it. Until we go through that process, until we have those conversations, it's hard for me to tell you, here's the ideal, you know, because for every community, their ideal is going to be very different. And and hopefully that kind of answers the question that that you were you were asking.
Yep, thank you.
Was that it for noise? Then I do want to make sure. And sorry, I tricked you there. I forgot that we were doing noise next. But now we're going to do safety and get on to the wildfire stuff, which kind of ties back to some of your resource conservation questions. So is it okay to do safety? Which is wildfires, floods, all that.
Yes. Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
All right. So again, safety element is another mandatory chapter of the general plan. It's all about keeping the city safe and it has some similar components. They want you to look at background technical information. This is where you'll often see a lot of maps because we have a lot of, you know, hazards that we may be concerned about within our community, depending on where you're you're located in the state. And then a series of goals, policies and actions to help you address these concerns. This is where it gets a little more interactive. So the safety element itself is governed by Government Code Section sixty five three oh two G. And prior to two thousand and six, very little was known or or cared for when it came to the safety element. And then starting in two thousand and six and moving forward from there, there have been a number of additions to the requirements. So when it was originally written and for many years, this, these were the main topics that you needed to address. Do you have seismically induced surface rupture? This is basically, do you have a fault in your city that's currently considered active by the state? Ground shaking is obviously a concern. This is not Vandenberg rocket ground shaking. This is, you know, earthquake ground shaking. Flooding, tsunami, seashore dam failure, tsunami, or I'm sorry, seashore is just a think of the water sloshing in a swimming pool after a large earthquake. That's what seashore is. So it's an enclosed body of water where you you have the water moving. Subsidance, liquefaction, ground failure, wildland and urban fires, slope instability, things like mudslides and landslides. And then the items in blue are kind of these non hazard specific concerns. So are you close to a military installation? By close, they typically mean, is it like next door? But apparently, we probably should at least have some conversation about what's happening not too far from you at Vandenberg. Peak load water supply requirements, minimum road widths and clearances around structures and evacuation routes. And those last three, they've essentially been usurped by one of the later amendments to the government code with regard to safety elements. And here's what has happened. Here's what's changed. The first domino that fell was something called A B twenty one forty. This is where the state has identified that if you connect your local hazard mitigation plan, which you do have one, you're part of the the county's multi jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, there's a financial incentive by integrating that plan into your safety element. That was the first domino that fell. After that, wildfire hazards became the next one. This is where After that, um wildfire hazards became the next one. This is where now you as. A community that has a very high fire hazard severity zone identified by CAL FIRE. You need to work with CAL FIRE, go through their review process and have your safety element uh approved by the Board of Forestry and Fire Protection. The next one was dealing with climate adaptation, what's what's known as SV three seventy nine. And this is about you have hazards within your community. Can climate change affect those hazards? And how do you understand that? And how do you address that from a policy perspective? And then um evacuation analysis has become the next major component. Um, there's three pieces of legislation that have changed how we do safety elements. Uh, the uh one of them is focused on, do you have what are called single ingress egress uh roadways? So do you have cul-de-sacs or roadways that don't have a secondary connection into the rest of your roadway network? So basically a one-way and one-way out situation. And then uh the other two, AB four seven forty seven and AB fourteen oh nine are focusing on um evacuation. Uh, uh, doing an evacuation assessment. So looking at your community and then creating. A scenario and then evacuating your your community and understanding the safety capacity and the viability. Of your roadway network from an evacuation standpoint. Um, and then the last one, this is new, it goes into effect January first, twenty twenty eight. Um, is addressing extreme heat within the general plan. Um, and how extreme heat may affect your community, especially those that may be most vulnerable to extreme heat. Um, and then there's a uh one last piece of legislation. This is mostly a cleanup. Piece of legislation, uh but SV ten thirty five, it actually now attaches. All of the safety element requirements to the housing element. So now, when you touch your housing element, you gotta make sure you do all the same stuff to your safety element that's listed on the the screen here. One of the things I do like to illustrate too is that the safety element is not um a short-range action plan. It's not an extremely detailed document. It is not highly regulatory and it's not highly prescriptive. And on the right, I've identified ways that you could achieve some of those things and want to just illustrate that. Door safety element is the first step in being able to get things that are more short-range action plan oriented or. Extremely detailed or highly regulatory or highly prescriptive, but you don't have to do it today. So today, we want to focus on bigger picture. And we want to focus on what are the key concerns you have for your community. So just to share what's in the element today, you're covering topics like flood hazards, dam inundation. Seismic and geologic hazards, which include that whole list that you see. Wildland and urban fires, and then hazardous materials and risk of upset. Um, and on the right, you'll see the previous fire hazard map that was included in your plan. Um, this was done prior to the CAL FIRE program where they started to go out and map all communities. Within what they call their FRAP program and identify the the very high fire hazard severity zones. For the local agencies like yourselves, as well as all of the fire hazard severity zones for all. Of the state responsibilities, all the areas outside of cities. And your uh safety element has a a number of key goals uh as as you see on the screen here. Uh, and for the most part, you know, these are are fairly standard goals, uh and and something where I think we have some room to to help. Uh, kind of improve and and help also focus in on some of the uh key concerns that you may have with your community. Um, and then finally, um, this is really part of our process is we want to go out and we want to not only take what you have in your existing element. Um, we want to look for what is that new information that's a little bit better uh with regard to flooding and wildfires and evacuation. Um, as required by state law, we're going to look for, you know, guidance from state and regional agencies like Santa Barbara County. Uh, like uh the state of California and uh and then we're going to have to work through your CAL FIRE review checklist. Uh, and some of the best practices that we like to incorporate into safety element updates based on this kind of new framework we have to to operate under. Um, and on the right, what you see here is the new fire hazard severity zone maps that CAL FIRE has put out. Where you see the solid colors, those are within the city limits for Buellton. Uh, and where you see the uh colors that have the the line work or the crosshatch, those are the state responsibility areas. And this, I think, definitely depicts a better picture of really understanding the risk. That not only your community, but the surrounding areas of your community may experience and uh from a wildfire perspective. So with that, um, I have kind of two buckets of questions that I wanted to go over. The first is really focusing on hazard and vulnerabilities. And I wanted to ask, are there new hazards that you are concerned about uh for your community? And then are there specific locations or populations that you're also concerned about? Uh, that may be impacted either by these new hazards or by some of the existing hazards that you're very familiar with?
Would it be possible? It might be good for you to also say what the second bucket is too. So I feel like.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just previews of coming attractions so we know how to stack.
Absolutely. So the second one is really focusing more on the city operations and city functions. So what are, what city functions do you anticipate needing to change? In response to some of these hazard concerns? And then the final one, and this is like my big question, what keeps you up at night?
As it pertains to the safety element.
Let's try to focus in on that, but if you have other things, I'm 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 here to listen.
All right. So uh Planning Commission team, anybody have any clarifying questions or comments? Uh, we're focusing on the first one, just first bucket or both?
Good luck keeping us in line with that.
You you know what? It it it's it's fine. Go whichever direction you feel most comfortable with.
To keep everyone on one topic.
Go for it.
Yeah, so some, so concerns that we have, some real new concerns that happen are their frequency and and of uh rain and floods. I think we have. And and then the neighboring properties around those Zaca Zaca Creek, Thumbelina Creek, and then the river. We've seen some past few years, twenty three, twenty four, some big floods coming through. So we want to be able to have those identified and then. How how are we going to deal with that? How are we going to work with flood control to maybe keep the facilities, you know? In good order, like ma- make sure that happens because we can lobby, we can push to get things done. Um, to make sure we have good facilities to deal with that or or build, you know. Work with the flood control district to help build, you know, better channel facilities with the water can channel better as the storms get bigger, you know? Um, and then updating FEMA maps that show flooding because FEMA. Make make that part of it because FEMA puts out new, they just recently put a new map out. So. I mean, that's going to help with development, it's going to help us with decisions on setback issues. So. Uh, that's that's what keeps me up at night too, is the frequency of storms that are coming through that are really dangerous and. We've seen some devastation in the county past several years. That's something the city will, we want to. Stress.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Casey. I'm Marcel.
Um, I just want to say the, you know, the city has done uh has really improved in keeping our drainage systems uh. Cleared uh in the last couple of years. Uh, I've I've noticed it. Uh, up till about three years ago, I'd always have to get over here to the fire department and get sand. I haven't had to do that in the last uh two or three years. And if I do, I have uh kids to do that for me now.
All right. Daniel, Brian, Brian?
Uh, just one comment. I think it's kind of interconnected in terms of mostly with wildfires and. It's, I don't know that it's a hazard or a vulnerability, but um home insurance is kind of impacted by these things. And as maps change with. Fire severity and things like that becomes more difficult for citizens actually to obtain home insurance or. It it in other ways, in other cases, paying three times as much. I don't know if there's ways that city governments are seeing mitigation. Uh, ways to mitigate as a way to improve the ability to retain insurance or or get insurance for homes.
Okay.
As for me is uh. We are having a new cottage health center close by two residential. Uh, how do we deal with hazards of that kind? Uh, health hazards or if something were to happen in that facility, how do we maintain boundaries and how do we maintain? Our public uh safe from issues like that. Uh, the other one is. We're pretty close to the granite back uh granite pure plant. And now we just added three hundred plus apartments. There be, what are we thinking about that? If something happens in those plants as well, do we have something in our guidelines? Whatnot in regards to those two elements? Uh, uh, that's kind of my thoughts as we produce more residencies closer to. Uh, commercial properties, you know, commercial fire next to a residency, uh, things like that. So.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I mean, I think um at the prior joint meeting, I I made a number of comments about hardening and I take Aaron's point about how. The safety element can be a tool to guide us to prepare, y- you know, additional materials. And that it doesn't always need to happen now, but to uh. Commissioner Campbell's point about um. Home insurance, I think it's a good point because. There are things that you can do to. Decrease the cost of your your home insurance, right? And and those are things that statistically, I mean, there's a reason they charge you less, right? We know it helps improve uh when there's fire risk, right? So those are the types of things that I think we should be building into. Our design standards as well, like, oh, what are the things that we know there's a document, a documented. Reduction in risk for a community that should be informing how we design new developments. Um, and then to the extent, we obviously know about like the zone. What do they call it for fire zone zero? It's like the zero to five feet from homes. When we have programs in place, like we have the tree initiatives, we have um uh programs where people get. You know, essentially like a a subsidy or they get a a refund for implementing new landscaping. We should require people to comply with. Uh, defensible space requirement. Those are like easy. Areas in which these types of things could be implemented. Um. Think that's what I have to say for now, but in in general, I do think that. Anything we can do to harden, especially like in new de- uh new developments and then. The uh like low hanging fruit for existing developments. So it's not going to be burdensome for people is. Um, important.
Moving it over to council, who wants to go first?
I just wanted to piggyback on what uh Chair Reese was commenting on. Um, just briefly before I started on my other comments. I think those are good points, uh, but I would want to just put like a word of caution in on um on requiring people to comply with defensible space. Uh, I think we can, you know, bandy that about and just debate that when the time comes, but. Um, my understanding of some defensible space provisions require like a fifty-foot buffer for any like a tree or anything from a house. And that would be. At least where I live, eliminate all of our trees. So um, something to to consider. So a couple of things, I took a little note here, hold on. Um, so what keeps me up at night is our telecommunication infrastructure redundancy or lack thereof. Um, I know this is more about fire and flooding right now, but um. In so much that it uh encapsulates that concern. Um, we recently, not too long ago, had. A line severed and we had no ability to call nine one one for a period of time anywhere throughout the city. And I think that is a huge uh safety concern. Whatever we can do to 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 further that along, I think is uh really of paramount importance. Uh, and the other thing is uh our brush clearance. Uh, I think it relates to flood and fire and our insurance concern that um. Commissioner Campbell was mentioning. Um, I know that uh this really primarily is a river and creek issue, but we regularly have. Presidents complain. Uh, and when you see the J S map that fire comes out and produces really. The main fire concern is related to the creek and riverbeds and it's it's the it's the brush that's in there. And and same for the flooding concern. Um, I believe there's. Active litigation now against the city about potentially what's happening with um. Uh, clearing of uh certain waterways. So in so much that we can, uh, if there's anything we can do about that, I think we should consider addressing it.
The um, I think the insurance that the. The insurance deal is important. If if there's a way for us to do something that we reduce the insurance. Cause I don't know what, you know, we can do defensive space or whatever, but I don't, I think the insurance companies. Pretty much do, they dictate what you can and can't do. My neighbor had to take a swing out of his tree. You know, because he had trees, you know, the kid had a swing in a tree and he. The insurance came and told him to take it out. So I think that a lot of it's covered, you know, they they cover their own, you know. Their own fields.
I think we can certainly look at, again, new construction is something where we can, we can talk about some some serious policies for for development and design. But even for our existing um neighborhoods and such, there are um. Actions that can be taken on a community level or a neighborhood level that can help reduce um insurance rates. Uh, and the city, while it probably wouldn't be in the in the in in the role of mandating something like that, would could certainly. Uh, encourage and possibly incentivize that for uh our residents, particularly in particular, um. Buyer Safe Council um of Santa Barbara County puts a program together where they will come out and inspect a given neighborhood and provide. Uh, actions that can be taken by the neighborhood and and they come back out after a period of time and inspect to ensure that those things have happened. And if they've happened. They'll provide a certification to the neighborhood, which has in many cases resulted in decreased insurance rates for the neighborhood. So. That's something that's not city administered, it's not city mandated, but we could certainly build it into our policies to try and encourage that sort of a a program. Participation by our neighborhoods.
I believe it's called a firewise.
Firewise, thank you.
Anything we can do. But if we can get the insurance, you know, to get out, not make us a hazardous place.
So I'm I'm going to be and be hyper-specific and think about these questions. Um. A couple of locations and populations I'm concerned about are obviously the senior village apartments that are coming in. I mean, we're going to have, and then even the people. In Polo Village, we do have a lot of elderly people there and a lot of people with mobility issues. So I'm concerned about how would we quickly evacuate them or get them. Today where they need to be because they're going to need help to do that. Uh, same with Buellton Garden Apartments, there's only one road. So I'm like, how do we get all those people out of there? And the idea of like, my big concern, like going up, but piggybacking about that nine one one is just the general response time of our emergency vehicles here. How do we, how can we get emergency vehicles here faster? Like, I I know that we don't have them here all the time and they, but like, what if there was a. Like, where are we getting them all from? Or, you know, and like that idea of how do we keep in an emergency, how do we keep the roads clear in a large emergency? I'm not talking about. Someone calling an ambulance, but gosh, I hope it's fast. But that idea, if we had a citywide emergency, how do we get the roads clear so emergency vehicles can get here? And then how are we communicating that out to the citizens, like either stay at home or go to the school or stay out the, like. How are we talking to citizens generally speaking? So those are the areas of concern for, again, I know it's hyper-specific, but also even Rancho Club Estates. I'm, I mean, that's another population. I mean, they have like one road in, right? One road, maybe even one road in, one road out. So that idea of like, again, I know it's hyper-specific, but just those are the locations and when I think about emergencies, that's where my brain goes. And how can we help those people with that so we can quickly?
A few perminences, I piggyback again off of all the way you talked about, like digital resilience, I think is going to be critical for that and like telecommunications and electricity. Um, if we don't have any of those things being met, it leads to Mad Max era kind of just anarchy that takes. Um, so I think that's one. I also saw most of our things that said like. It was like protect life and property was what most of our standards are. And I really would be curious about pulling the scope out to protect. Quality of life as an element to kind of guide some of the decisions we're making because I think we. It should be like, well, you didn't die should not be our baseline for what we're going with here. So I just think kind of changing the lexicon a bit of quality of life protection, what that leads to. Cause I think that then helps kind of guide some of our further discussions um off of council member meeting further, but not having explicitly called out ADA specific plan when considering. Mobility issues and uh mental mental capacity issues or even communication issues we don't have. So I would say. Something along that would be really important in my mind to have included into our safety plan of how we're having ADA element layered into that. I'm sure that there's like. Building code basics, but like from the safety elements, just making sure that there's a a a specific call for that. Um, and then also evacuation routes, I know came up with it. We often view it as like, how do we get Buellton where we need to go? But we also have the unique position of. Should there be an emergency to our east? Buellton is the access point for where everyone from solving Sanes will come through as well. So. Though we are solving for evacuation pro- processes for Buellton populations, it's really not about the fifty five hundred of us. It's about. Really, how do you get fifteen thousand people through us? Should there be a reason that the two forty six needs? Really, how do you get fifteen thousand people through us? Should there be a reason that the two forty six needs to come through? Our direct, or not the two four six, the one fifty four, but as we see, it's like if the one fifty four has a. As a as a bad car accident, Beelton goes into gridlock because everything goes through us, and so. I think that that as we look at it, it's not just an evacuation for residents of Beelton, but we're the valley access point for that, so just being thoughtful for that planning and. And guiding what those strategies are. I usually after I say a few things, it jump jumped something for you, anything you want to add?
I just wanted to ask a clarifying question actually of Aaron, um we don't have any like AP faults near what. Near us, right?
If if memory serves, no, I don't believe so, I I wanna say. Uh yeah, I can't, I can't tell you how close it is, but I don't believe you have any within the city uh proper.
I had another um comment brought with about evacuation plan that then it. Just occurred to me now, there was some kind of a gas leak. At Albertson's, we have a whole community that doesn't have a back door, is there an exit? For that community?
There is an it, there is an emergency exit out the back or but out through the um to the east, yeah.
Okay, and then uh that also brings to mind the uh. The road. That we've been talking about uh. From the park. To make uh to industrial way. And part of that would be to to limit or to reduce traffic. But it also could be an evacuation. There's something big at that corner, people on industrial way have no nowhere to go.
Right.
So I think we should prioritize that uh circulation element. Um maybe through the wastewater treatment plant, which we've talked about before, but that should, we should have that as a. You know. Something important to do.
Yeah, we'll 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 need to build that into our circulation element as well as the safety element, I guess.
Only the piece to add is I with specific populations concerned about, I think one that comes up is oftentimes um. Hardening and safety is kind of a financial luxury that favors the economically advantaged, so like when it comes to uh extreme heat. The first populations that suffer from that are the ones who can't afford air conditioning, who can't afford cooling centers or who utilize that the most, so I just think when we're looking at our safety element is. Being mindful of the socioeconomic uh impacts that we go with that, and part of that also attached is, I know we have a large Spanish speaking population who is. Not very engaged with with what's happening locally, and so just being thoughtful when it comes to our safety plans of also adding, just being mindful of. That there is a population that is unaware or not not connected in with most of our communication strategies or even what these programs are or uh adoptions of them. So even if we want to do heat pumps, that outreach is often limited to those who know how to have access to it, so I think just keeping in mind when they were talking about safety that. We inherently have blinders on from the populations that need it, because those populations are the least likely to respond to a survey. Or to have been captured in any of our outreach efforts, so I would just keep in mind. Non-English speaking populations and those who are on the most fringe elements of the uh average median income of our our city, because they're going to. Need the most assistance with some of these safety concepts.
I I think that uh an important resort for our non-English speaking um population. Is uh is good communication through the schools, because I find that our school district has outreach into those communities already. And they would tend to be a very reliable conduit to to providing information to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was actually my question, like we can come up with incredible plans for evacuation and provide all this, but my question is always. How do we, how do we inform the citizens that this is what the plan is? You know, and that's the big question, and so. Like, you know, in schools, we all did fire, you know, you like you practice, right? And it's like, how do you get a whole city to practice what we need to do in a case of emergency, but obviously you can't, so. How do you think about? How do you think about all those things?
Emergency dress rehearsal.
I mean, I would love, I mean, honestly, I mean, we have the great, we have the great shakeout in California, but I only did it in schools and I know that they, but it's just. That idea of like, how do you get a city to practice what happens in case of emergency, like I know that sounds like a crazy question, but. Wouldn't wouldn't we all feel better if everyone in our neighborhood knew what to do?
That could be that neighborhood.
Right, yeah, it's like, there's a lot of ways to think about it.
I just participated in a large scale like E O C. Um exercise essentially, it's like. Half a day fake emergency, but like how do we get ahold of people of uh. What is done, what paperwork needs to be filled out so we can be reimbursed by the state and that, so. Is it very interesting? Um I do have a quick question for staff, um. Do we have an existing objective policy requiring secondary access once a community is over a certain number of units?
I don't believe so currently, no. I don't think you do either.
Okay, that's like, that's pretty. Easy, I mean, I know that we don't have a lot of space for large. Scale communities, but like. To to require a secondary access. Makes sense.
Not not yet, don't have space for it.
A- and and just as a cl- a point of clarification, because you are going to now have to go through CAL FIRE review. You're going to have the expectation from CAL FIRE to actually have a policy about that issue, so. Um that will be something you will see in the updated element.
Anything further on safety for anyone, that last chance?
Um, yeah, we we do have, uh I think from the county wherever. There's a program for first responding uh training. And um. I just can't think of the name of it. So we we could uh, you know, part of the outreach, encourage uh folks to to get involved with that. I did, and it gives you an idea of uh basic things to do, like I never think about the gas, but. Yeah, turning your gas off is a really good idea, and a few other things that they taught us.
Need to look at how you do that, good idea. I think that's all of us on, all for us on safety at this time.
Okay, Aaron, you wanna, oh, good, there you go, those presentations you get, could you see us? By the way, when the presentations are up or you don't see our faces?
We can see little little boxes of you over the top.
Good, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because Aaron was doing a lot of head nodding during that, I was like, I don't know if I can see you there. Um, okay, so next steps, um we're of course going to be taking all of this and starting our work um on these. Chapters of or elements of the um general plan, we've already been underway with working on the other elements of the general plan. And we're in the process of preparing the administrative review draft, that'll go to staff. And then once that gets reviewed and refined, we come up with a public review draft. Um so that'll go out for the whole public and we'll find a way to engage with the public on that draft and we'll probably come back to you for a study session. And then we're looking towards adoption at the end of um next year. Um and we'll also be, of course, starting the um environmental impact report during that period too, because we'll need that to. To adopt the general plan um at the end of the year um. And that's our general schedule, I don't think I had anything else to add, but Andrea, I think you had something you want to discuss or?
I was just gonna mention that um at the next council meeting, we will be bringing forward an item, um as we've talked about a bunch of these. A bunch of the things we're doing with the general plan and um some extra work efforts that may need to occur as part of the general plan, so council. At the next council meeting, we'll have a discussion on that um to kind of talk through what some of that feels like, but um. All related to what we talked about today, so more to come on that at the next council meeting.
We've expanded from the scope of what we originally thought this general plan was going to be, great, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, well, one of the things that came forth as as you saw in Aaron's presentation was there. Actually, even since we've started this process, there's. Some new state requirements there, so that's definitely one of the things that's going to be coming your way, so. Anyway. Um but that that's it for for what we have, so thank you so much for your time and input tonight, um this helps us a lot in um forward.
Yeah, and I think I just wanted to add in here that if we do have any public comments um at this time, would be the appropriate time to take them.
No pressure, but did she have a public?
Told me not to say anything.
She's not here. Feel free, if you'd like to come up to the microphone and add any questions or. Add any comments to this, if not, you don't have to. It's okay if you don't want to, there is no pressure there. But you sat through two hours of us talking.
Uh you guys mentioned design a lot and then uh the consultant here mentioned that it will go to public review. Uh I'm curious uh. Having read the previous general plan. What the uh experience of some of the council members are um. With the design of these things, I know that the planning department is going to have some of that, but. A lot of the questions and concerns uh tended to be about uh safety concerns, which. Felt a little redundant due to, you know, state and county uh like the. Um air pollution control district comments, right? Uh I wonder why we have some of these uh. Larger projects going in that uh seem to be from outside. Companies investing in like these big housing developments in Beelton. Uh the home to suites, whoever approved the design of that, like that thing's horrible. I don't know why we're trying to attract um. Trying to attract uh these lower end hotels when we are the gateway to the valley. Where there is money and design and beauty and why are we as. Beelton people settling for poor design? So um. That's kind of why I'm here and I'm concerned and I am very excited to see the public re- review for this. Um and. I guess that's it.
I I have one answer, but we we only review what people bring us. So everybody says, why don't, why don't we do this and why don't we do that? We just sit here and we just receivers. So if somebody comes in, you know, and. The public people, how can you let that go in? Well, somebody. There's investor coming in, nobody in town, I don't think is going to decide to build a hotel. So that's, it sounds like you're out of town. Developers, well, developers, you know, we have the property here, they own the property. And then they make decisions what they want to do with the property, we just have to approve it or disapprove it, but you. We we don't uh. That's, I mean, that's, that's what happens, you know, bring your checkbook if you want to build something else, but people bring. People come and build stuff and they want to build it here and we just.
How can we attract? Maybe some local attention. Might be a conversation to have rather than, you know, I didn't mean to.
I'd be happy to talk about this after meeting if you want, if you want chat, you know, no problem.
No, thank you though for the feedback and I appreciate that, and yes, we will, I I think you're very much heard, so I appreciate that. We do, though, by the nature of you doing a public comment, you do have to fill out a golden rod form and provide your name for our minutes now. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for coming.
You'd like to make a po- oh my gosh, everyone's feeling empowered tonight, listen for it, you will also have to fill out a golden rod form. I just want to say the word golden rod is a tertiary color as often as possible.
John, he spoke, I I do personally, and it's council member appreciate you coming and saying you'd like to see Beelton be a nice place.
Thank you.
For all of us.
Well, hello. Um where I was previously was the Santa Barbara County Education Office and they have a robust emergency operations plan. Um so I would encourage you guys, if you're curious to get ahold of their safety liaison, they work with all the schools in the county and they have. Um some really good things that they've been figuring out um in terms of, well, emergency response. And then in addition, when it comes to digital resili- uh resiliency and telecommunications redundancy. Um safety is something I'm really passionate about, and especially in the digital and telecommunications sector, and so I remember when that line went down. My dad and I had a very busy night trying to get New Frontiers online, getting a point to point radio set up to. Hit the uh Sanino's Peak so they could run off Keys' network and we had them up that night, which is pretty uh uh interesting. But I would suggest that if it's possible for the city to look into having not only their own redundant system, if there isn't one currently in place for. Uh the city's internet, but also if there are emergency. Air or places like the schools or places that the city would set up during an emergency. Making sure that there's either something portable that can be brought to bring stuff online, electricity and internet. Or requesting that those businesses, if they're participating, that they have some kind of redundancy and meet these requirements for the city.
Thank you very much.
Was there an internet that worked at that time? Was it, we have satellite, right?
Satellite, um yeah, our 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 phone based uh uh landline based internet was out. And and to a large extent, our um cellular internet was out too, because that eventually runs to landline that was severed here, so.
Did the satellite work that day or no?
Um, actually, I don't know, I was out of the state during that time, yeah.
I will also just say there's a a good term to look up, it's called a PACE plan, P A C E, stands for primary, alternate, contingent, emergency. Uh it's a standard in terms of planning out communications, um and that's a a standard that we were looking at. Uh at at the county when we were planning on how the schools would manage their. Thank you, yeah.
All right, and is there anyone online at all that we have tonight?
I don't.
Okay, well, thank you for public comment this evening and for providing all that input there, I think we move along now to closing comments and we start with Chair Reese.
Yeah, um to echo council member Hornix um. Comments earlier, I really appreciate the public coming out for this, this is. You know, as you can see, like pretty detailed, we're all being educated and providing feedback and we appreciate. Public taking time to do that as well, and we had some previous pretty poignant uh comments about um. Creek safety and and flooding um from. A gentleman that. Influenced my comments as well, so um we, it adds value to have people participate in the public process, so. Uh that's very much appreciated. And, you know, uh. Any feedback that um our team of consultants, I mean, you guys are the experts, you prepare these documents routinely um. And what you've seen that's that's worked or what you've seen that's been problematic, I mean, that's really helpful feedback for us um. To hear and and will inform our decision making, so that's appreciated, and I think. You know, you got a lot of comments from us and and some of them had follow up items as well, so um. Uh that's the, at least the type of information I'm uh interested in receiving, so um. Thanks, everybody, for their time tonight.
Yeah, I want to thank everyone for being here as well and thank you for the public coming out, I think something that's a takeaway from this discussion also is that. As we look to the general plan, I think, you know, communicated by public com, but also from all of us up here is a a hope and an expectation. For Beelton not to settle for baseline. Oh, they just left.
That was not my fault.
Wow, really, I was just gonna have such a good statement. Oh, okay, I was like, wow, then the meeting's over, everyone, yeah, called it, anyway, but I think that we've set an expectation that we can't be. Just doing baseline, and I think that really as we look to these things, I think that the uh to Aaron's point there of like. We can do more than just what's legally required to hit the the benchmarks would be something that not just, it would be good at policy for us, but also. A good social contract to hold with the residents of the city, and I think that there's an expectation that we exceed expectations for this, um so I just really appreciate everyone's time and. I think that we have the luxury of kind of guiding the next twenty five years, which is not very frequent when we're sitting in these places, and I think if all the others up here. View it as how do we leave a legacy that showcase that we set up twenty fifty for being. A Beelton that people like, wow, thank goodness they did this twenty five years ago, and I think that's what every time we look at one of these elements, it should be from. What's the hard work to start now, so that twenty five years from now, they're like, oh, thank God they did that back then, because it's ten times more expensive and prevented X amount of. Issues, I just really thank everyone coming in for um out of the box conversations, and I appreciate you guys helping educate us so we can help make. Thoughtful decisions, and thank you to the staff for bringing us all together, I know managing this many calendars is probably not very easy.
We did it though, so.
We got them, nine out of ten, um so anyway, we appreciate that and we'll adjourn at seven forty five P M, thank you all for being here tonight.